Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for joining us. This is the Commissioner meeting of July 13th, 2022 here at Sussex County Community College at 6:00 PM at their Performing Arts Center here in Newton, New Jersey. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Terry to please call the roll.
Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Here.
Director Fasano.
Here.
Commissioner Space.
Here.
Commissioner Yardley.
Here.
Everybody's here this evening. Our next item, I'll ask if you can please rise with us for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notices defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231 PL 1975 has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 5th, 2022, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex located at One Spring Street in Newton, New Jersey, to the following: The New Jersey Herald, The Star-Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, I'd like to remind you to please mute all electronic devices. Item five on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. I'd just like to note two following additions to our executive session agenda for this evening: Exemption number seven, Cochran House Condo Association, and exemption number eight, personnel. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney, second. Any discussion?
I have a question. The personnel agenda items in executive session, does that take account to the email that we received today stating that there was a change? It said hot off the press, we received it around 12:30, that there was some kind of title change? Is that something that's in our public personnel agenda, or is that for executive?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Lovell for that one.
If you need any questions, Mr. Space, we can take it to executive or I can answer publicly. It really doesn't deal with a specific person, it deals with the title. So I'm happy to do it either way, you're willing to take it into executive or come back out and move it, or just move it to the rest of the chamber.
I don't think we need to table that.
Understood.
We can do that right now.
Uh huh.
Yeah, we don't have to table that anymore.
No need to table, I'm not making a motion to table.
Okay, understood. Any other discussion on the item? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item six on our agenda are proclamation certificates and presentations, and although we do have one listed, Patrick, the recipient of Sussex County's NJAC Foundation 2022 SH International Scholarship Program, is not here this evening. He unfortunately had to cancel, but no worries, we will make that up when he's ready. Item seven on our agenda is our public hearings. Our first public hearing, 7A, is a final adoption of ordinance 2207. Is there a motion that the public hearing be opened for this ordinance?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Is there anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? If so, please come up to the microphone regarding final adoption of ordinance 2207. Seeing none, is there a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Now we need a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted and to authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as finally adopted, and also post the same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, seconds. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Yes.
Director Fasano.
Yes.
Commissioner Space.
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley.
7B on our agenda is the final adoption of ordinance 2208. Is there a motion that the public hearing be opened for ordinance 2208?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Is there anyone present here to be heard regarding this ordinance 2208? If so, please line up to the microphone. Seeing none, is there a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Now do we finally have a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted and to authorize the clerk of the board to advertise this ordinance as finally adopted, and to also post the same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, second. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Yes.
Director Fasano.
Yes.
Commissioner Space.
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley.
Yes.
Item carries. Item eight on our agenda is our first public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. When you arrive, please state your name, your municipality, and the agenda topic for the record. Is there a motion to open the floor for public comment regarding agenda items only?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? The floor is now open for public comment regarding agenda items only. Seeing none, is there a motion to close the floor for public comment for agenda items only?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item nine on our agenda is our Commissioner comments portion, and as always, we'll start to my left with Commissioner Space.
Thank you. Okay. The Woodland Behavioral and Nursing Center update, also known as Andover Subacute, formerly known as. Atlantic Health continues to manage the daily operations of the Woodlands Behavior and Nursing Center. The New Jersey Department of Health communicates regularly with Atlantic Health through phone calls and weekly reports. To date, most of the residents have been successfully transitioned to various facilities throughout the state. Currently, there are 120 residents in the facility, with 18 residents from New Jersey and 102 residents from New York State. Since the overwhelming majority of the individuals remaining to be transitioned are from New York, New York State Medicaid is on-site and is creating plans of discharge for their residents. The National Guard remains on-site at the nursing home to assist with nursing home operations such as meal prep, answering phones, and sanitizing. Atlantic Health has been coordinating with the New Jersey Department of Labor to hold job fairs on-site at Woodlands to facilitate job placement for current employees. The local employment and training services has joined the New Jersey Employment Services to provide training and reemployment services to staff as well upon the closing of the facility. On Friday, I had the opportunity as liaison to the Morris Sussex Warren Workforce Development Board to attend a Zoom meeting along with representatives from the Workforce Development Board, Atlantic Health, and New Jersey Department of Labor in response to the 250 employees at Woodland. I was informed of the Rapid Response Team virtual meeting scheduled for this week, Monday through Thursday, three sessions each day, including one Spanish session. The majority of the employees reside in Sussex and Essex Counties. Sussex One Stop and Essex One Stop have also been on hand to help guide the employees. On Monday, I sat in on one of the virtual events. The speakers included a representative from the U.S. Department of Labor and the New Jersey Department of Labor. The official layoff date is August 8th, 2022. Employees were notified of their right of COBR insurance, along with information on other healthcare options, in department description of how, when, and where to apply for unemployment grant, oh, when and where to apply for unemployment grants for furthering their education if in a demand field, and given forms to fill out for possible job placements. As of this morning, 110 employees have participated with five sessions left to go. Three eager employers looking to connect with the employees, two of which are located in Sussex County. I was very pleased to hear how thorough all the information is being given to these frontline true heroes who never gave up on the residence at Andover Subacute Woodland Behavioral Center, especially during the last two years of the pandemic. Division of Senior Services, Senior Day at the Fair, Senior Day at the New Jersey State Fair will be held in the Planet Network's Performing Arts Tent at the Sussex County Fairgrounds in Augusta on Thursday, August 11th, 2022, between the hours of 9:00 and 12:30. Attendees can enjoy a morning filled with music, light refreshments, store prizes, and more. The Senior of the Year will be announced, and nominees will be recognized during the event. In addition, Skylands Ride bus drivers will be presented with safety awards. Sussex County Skylands Ride will be providing transportation to the fair. Those in need of transportation can call Skylands Ride at (973) 579-0480. And the Sussex County Ninth Annual Veterans Picnic, the Division of Senior Services, Municipal Alliance, and the Veterans Committee will host the Ninth Annual Veterans Picnic on Saturday, August 20th, from noon to 2:00, at the American Legion Post 213 located at 915 Route 23 North in Sussex. The picnic will include live music, giveaways, tables, and veterans service information, and a homemade barbecue. Pre-registration is required for this event by August 12th, 2022. For additional information and RSVP for the picnic, please contact the Division of Senior Services at (973) 579-0555, extension 1221. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Space. Commissioner Fantasia.
Thank you. I'm going to start this evening with some information from our Health Department. The Division of Health, in collaboration with Sparta Pharmacy, continues to offer COVID-19 vaccinations. Next is at the Ho Pat Kong Firehouse Number 3 at Ho Pat Chung Road in Ho Pat Kong on Saturday, July 23rd, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. If you'd like to fill out your consent form in advance, you can visit sussex nj.us. And Public Health Nursing continues to provide homebound vaccinations for those who wish. Also, free at-home COVID-19 testing kits still are available through a program sponsored by our county. If you visit our website, you can choose either between Vault Medical Services or Lab Core, and this is free. So the most recent New Jersey Department of Health COVID-19 Activity Level Report indicates that COVID is at high levels in six counties and medium in 15. We are one of the 15 that is considered to be moderate. We've been reporting on average about 50 cases per day. As far as hospitalizations go, it seems to be pretty aligned with May. We had 48 hospitalizations, June 49, and so far, to this point in July, for the first week in July, I have the numbers, we have nine. So it seems to be fairly steady, and the variants, according to the most Department of Health variant reports, 100% are due to Omicron. If you want to learn anything about what your options might be for COVID, again, please visit our website. Now moving on to the Division of Health, the Office of Mosquito Control. Although the county's experienced an average total rainfall for the month of June, high numbers of the cattail mosquito have been identified in nightly traps. So in response, the Office of Mosquito Control has conducted five ULV truck-mounted applications within six municipalities throughout June. We've done two already in July, and we have six additional scheduled for the next three days. And I could tell you when they are, and they're also posted on the website. Now, this is the truck-mounted ULV application for adult mosquitoes only. So this evening, actually, between the hours of 7:00 PM and 12:00 AM, they will be spraying in Stillwater, Hampton in the Crandon Lakes community, Frankfurt Township, and a couple streets in Lake Owassa Lake community. On Thursday, July 14th, they will be spraying in Green Township. And then on Friday, July 15th, they will be spraying in Stanhope Borough, Ho Pat Kong, and Byram Township in the East and West Brookwood communities. So again, for any information regarding the products that are used or the procedures, please visit our website, and there is a link for the Office of Mosquito Control. We have reported that a total of 160 pools of adult mosquitoes have been tested here in the county. And what our office tests these mosquitoes for are Eastern Equine Encephalitis, Jamestown Canyon Virus, which is that very, very rare virus that caused the single fatality in New Jersey right here in Sussex County last year, West Nile Virus and St. Louis Encephalitis. So the good news is there have been zero pools tested positive since we began testing this year for any of those diseases. We began testing, I think, in early May. So the Office of Mosquito Control is setting up mosquito displays and providing education on mosquito control efforts and disease in Byram, Ho Pat Kong, Sparta, and Hardeston in the month of July. So that's from the Health Department. Next, please excuse me, I have to reference my computer. My printer really died just about a half an hour before I left my house, so you know how I don't enjoy using this, but I have no choice this evening. So I wanted to share with you that there was an awards ceremony held in front of the Sussex County Courthouse in the early morning on Thursday, July 7th, where Sheriff Strata was pleased to recognize several members of the Sussex County Sheriff's Office for exceptional and meritorious duty. So I would like to share with you the names of those who were recognized. The Gallantry Star was received by Under Sheriff John Shanstra, Captain Lawrence Beller, and Sergeant John Gray. Then there was the Meritorious Service Medal to Corporal Robert Schilling and Officer Robert Washer, the Honorable Service Medal to Officer Kenneth Farber. Exceptional Duty Awards went to Detective Corporal Warren Slayher, Detective Corporal John Frekhar, Detective Justin McCann, Sergeant Scott Haggerty. The Military Service Ribbon went to the following: Officer Kenai Powell, Officer Mark Bowman, Officer Jesse Bambrick, Officer Michael Weber, Officer Brian Gallagher. And then for the public safety telecommunicators, the CPR Lifesaver Certificate of Commendation went to the following three employees: Angel Bellis, Stephanie House, and Supervisor Andrea Werenberg. The sheriff had said he was incredibly proud of each and every one of the officers and employees from the sheriff's office, and again, we congratulate the men and women that serve our county in that capacity. I received quite an extensive quarterly report from the Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council, and what a change since the April 5th hiring of Carol Yoshamine. As you know, we were working on a real shoestring budget. The commissioners were able to fund the Arts and Heritage Council a small increase this year, but they also were recipients of grants from the state of New Jersey. They were able to hire an executive director, and she just hit the ground, and she has not stopped moving. If you have not had a chance to check out the gallery on Spring Street, I highly suggest you do. She is absolutely incorporating all ages and making new connections out in the community with Panther Valley, all different kinds of artists, all ages. We have our children, teenagers, senior citizens, all different mediums. There's partnerships abound, and she's consistently looking for outside money, meeting with the state, and meeting with various groups. So I shared the report that came directly to me with the commissioners. I know it was a long report because it followed the three months leading up to June, and we're finding out if we are receiving grants that also, some of our historical societies can also benefit from, and they've applied as well. So we'll keep you posted as to what's happening with the Arts and Heritage Council, but what used to be something that's small is growing very, very large now, thank you to her. She's just doing a fabulous job. And last, I would like to just touch on something from the state again. As we are aware, that there has been gun legislation passed in Trenton by Governor Murphy, and here are seven of the laws that were just signed, signed into law by the governor. First would require training for anyone who wants a firearm or purchaser's ID card in addition to the already mandated training for obtaining a carry permit in New Jersey. Another bill would allow the state's Attorney General to bring, quote, "public nuisance claims against gun manufacturers and anyone marketing firearms." Three, anyone who moves to New Jersey from out of state must now apply for a purchaser's permit within 60 days and register their weapons with local law enforcement. Next, any gun seller in New Jersey will be required to carry micro-stamping firearms once the technology is certified by the state Attorney General. Next, guns imprint each bullet with identifying information to help police trace rounds back to the weapons that they were fired from. A state registry is created to track all ammunition sales, and anyone who purchases firearm parts to create unserialized guns will now be charged with a second-degree crime, raising the prison time to five to 10 years. And the final bill signed by Governor Murphy banned all 50 caliber guns in New Jersey. Now, this is sometimes labeled common sense gun laws, however, what is not common sense is the fact that community guns continue to not be targeted by the governor. Bail reform is letting out criminals early, and everything I just read to you, I don't know too many criminals who are lining up to comply with any of these regulations. None of these do anything to curb illegal gun violence, and nine people who were shot in Newark last week, I find it hard to believe that any of those apply to any of those crimes. This is nothing new. Here we sit in the state of New Jersey with a governor who I feel does an exceptionally poor job in general, but when it comes to legislating things he has no familiarity with, he is exceptionally bad at, this being one of them. I guarantee you that Governor Murphy and his gated community and his armed security detail, he's never been a victim of gun violence, I myself have. I guarantee you, when he legislates, that we won't have a bear hunt, I guarantee you, in his gated community, in his mansion or McMansion, if you will, he has never dealt with serious property damage or threat to livestock or his children due to bears. We have. Also, he is against school choice, and I guarantee that when you can certainly pay for any private school that you would like to send your children to, he has not experienced the difficulty of finding a school that's appropriate for your children. I have, Commissioner Space has, we both send our children to charter schools. So I just have to say the out-of-touch is off the charts here with this one, but there is a bright spot, and that's called the United States Supreme Court. And I would like to update you all that the New Jersey State Police has now published what you need to do in order to apply for your concealed carry weapon permit. Please visit their website. There's quite a few steps that you need to take on. You need a proper New Jersey firearms ID card, New Jersey resident or out-of-state resident. You need written proof of firearm ownership that you intend to carry. It's not a blanket permit. If you are granted a concealed carry weapon permit, it's for the specific weapon that you qualify with. You need proof of identification and citizenship. Funny, we don't need that to vote, but we do need it for this. You do have to file an application. You need photos in a notary. You need to be digitally fingerprinted. You need to take a qualification course. And all of the specifics, if you are interested, are available on the New Jersey State Police website, and there are plenty of facilities and different trainers, firearms trainers, that are now offering that. So it is open for you. I, for one, fully intend to pursue my concealed carry weapon permit. Again, we've seen so much happening in the news, and I dare say that any of these feel-good legislative measures that the governor is taking turns to blind eye to criminals, and I feel that it's our duty and our responsibility to protect our families and our loved ones. So that's what I have for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Fantasia. Commissioner Yardley.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. This is almost deja vu. I think we go back maybe three years when they were passing, let's see, going to ban certain guns in New Jersey. I don't know if you recall that. And I talked about trends. You mentioned NORC. You might get in trouble because, you know, a reporter tried to create a controversy over that, over the mere fact that I had said, did those gun, those shootings, did those people involved have those guns licensed? Were they, are they going to be arrested? It would be interesting to find out that when people are arrested, are they also charged with, you know, having an unlicensed gun? But, thank you. Just want to note that we, I've been working on a project for our veterans, program, and looking at all of the things that we do, and one of them was to get a parking spot in our parking area for a veteran, and I think it's a veteran with Purple Heart Veterans, you might see them around, so the Parking Authority apparently has approved that, and they'll be working on that and putting that up, so I think that's a good thing. I want to thank also our acting administrator and staff members, Christine, and for helping me, because I had some issues with the agenda, and that was all, I was able to take care of all of those things because of the staffing, and also the ability to reach out to different departments and ask some questions. And I want to say thank you for all the assistance and help, and I think a lot of things were able, I was able to clear up. One of the reasons I needed to do this is I have been away, and I came in, and it was, when I looked at the agenda, some items, there were some, I had some questions. So thank you for the help. A couple notes, the seniors, the farmer's market nutrition program is something we've talked about that is still active and ongoing, and again, seniors get a $30 voucher. There's also a women's health clinic, Thursday, July 28th, 4:00 to 8:00 PM, at the Office of Public Health Nursing. To make an appointment, you need to call Public Health Nursing at (973) 579-0570, extension 1246. And if anybody in the audience has an idea how we can do more outreach, because we do talk about it here, it's on our website, I think the Office of Health and Human Services and Health Department, they do as much outreach as they can, but if you are from a town, or you have a place where we can get flyers out, or you can do some outreach, you could let me know, or you can let our administrator know, or Christine Florio, because many of our programs, sometimes people don't know of them, and they're here, and then someone will say, "I didn't know about that." So more outreach is a lot better. There were about 100, conducted, Division of Health conducted 100, excuse me, 1,020 inspections from January to June, 948 food establishments, 49 recreational bathing facilities, 22 animal facilities, and five tanning facilities. And then they did 169 temporary food plan reviews and 27 fix reviews. And just so that everyone understands that every time you see a vendor at an event, at the fairgrounds, all of those vendors are inspected by the Health Department. They do a really good job. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Yardley. Deputy Director Carney.
Thank you, Director Fasano. I just want to give you guys an update on some guide rail upgrades. This project consists of the removal and replacement of damaged and/or substandard guide rail systems along County Route 605, 633, and 655. The proposed guide rail systems will be replaced with new Galvanos steel beam guide rail in conformance with current NJDOT standards. Guide rail upgrades, repairs may be conducted in other locations as scheduling, funds, weather, etc. permit. The contractor for this is Road Safety Systems LLC. I've said this before, I'll say it again, guide rail is very expensive. A replacement is $36 a foot. The end pieces are $3,300 apiece, so it's a big deal when cars hit them and need to be replaced. Total proposed rail upgrades is about 30,000 plus or minus feet. Total proposed terminal end upgrades, about 150, and the total estimated project cost is $1.6 million. So since I got back from vacation, I've been very busy in the county. We had a meeting on Friday, Anthony, myself, Alka Yetter, a bunch of different entities from the county going over how we could better our facilities. You know, the prosecutor's offices are not in good shape, as I mentioned at other meetings. The jail is a building that The jail is a building that is deteriorating and really not needed as it used to be. So we got a lot of information from, again, all the entities, and I do have a plan that we can go over at another time, but it was very good, very informative. I appreciate everybody coming to that meeting. It's something that was long overdue. It's something that, going forward, that we need to watch our facilities and maintain them, probably a little bit better than we do. I know Keith from Facilities does a great job, and he is keeping everything as much as he can up to par. I met with the DPW and Fleet last week. They were grateful from their hazard pay. They said thank you. Went over some concerns, as always. I always like to hear what they have to say, and I know when we had our ARPA meetings, Anthony, we kind of had some priorities and whatnot, so I will bring that to your attention where their priorities are. Met with Board of Elections, Christina Marks and I, just went over their space, the new space that they have. They need a lot of space. Those machines, I don't know if you guys have seen them, but the new requirements for those machines are like big garbage cans. They're huge. So they need a lot more room. The burden is on us, right? The taxpayer. They're mandated, obviously, by the state, and obviously, we'll have to address that. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with Sammy Horstfield to go over Sussex County Day. Christina Marks, myself, and Sam Gabriel will be discussing how we can make that better. Every year, she does a good job, so we're going to help her out with that. Tomorrow, you'll like this, Anthony, is the grand opening of the Wawa in Frankfurt.
Oh, yeah.
I'll be there.
You're going?
I'm going.
All right. That is from 8:00, 8 o'clock, 8:00 in the morning. That'll go on, so I don't know what they're giving away. I know Deputy Mayor Silverthorne's in the back. I don't know if they're giving away anything tomorrow. Coffee?
Better.
Some free coffee. Ooh. So if anybody's in the area, go get some free coffee at the Wawa, unless you'd like the Quick Check better. Sunday, I found out, I think yesterday, they did this last year, and I didn't know about it, and I actually just coincidentally showed up at the Carriage House in Coover Lake. They're doing a fundraiser for the food pantry, our food pantry, obviously, and that is going on from 1:00 to 8:00 o'clock. So that'll be at the Carriage House over in Frankfurt on Coover Lake, so if anybody, again, has some time, feel free to go over there. And that is all I have.
Well, thank you, Deputy Director Carney, and thanks to all who are joining us this evening. I'll keep my report really brief tonight. First, I hope everyone had a fantastic 4th of July. I wanted to thank Deputy Director Carney for his efforts in really putting together that County Space Utilization Meeting last week with our county leadership, our constitutional officers, to help us plan long-term for the needs of Sussex County and how we can grow with the needs of our residents. I thought that was a really productive meeting, one of the more productive meetings I've been a part of, and some really excellent input from our county staff as well, so I thank all of them, and I thank you as well, Chris. Sussex County is also preparing for small business assistance aimed at helping our small business community as the county is beginning to build out a platform for small businesses to apply. That also is progressing really well. I don't think we are far at all from getting the word out to our business community that county aid is available for them here and how to go about applying for it here. And finally, I just wanted to mention, as I do every year, my absolute favorite event of the year is coming up really soon. It's got a formal name, as you mentioned, Jill, but I call it the Sussex County Fair, at the Sussex County Fairgrounds from August 5th to the 13th, and if you haven't been before, I highly recommend you, your friends, your family, go and check it out. There's so much to do, truly something for everyone, and if you'd like more information, please visit sussexcountyfairgrounds.org. I checked out their schedule, and it just was packed with things to do. So with that, I will conclude my report. We'll move on to item 10 on our agenda, which is the approval of our consent agenda. Do we have any item, I'm sorry, do we have any motions to adopt Consent Agenda A through E?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item 11 is the approval of our minutes. I'd like to know Commissioner Carney and Yardley were absent from that meeting. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting and executive session of June 22nd.
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item 12 on our agenda is appointments and or resignations. We have one item, that's for me, for the Lake Muskegon Regional Planning Board. I was filling a vacancy formerly had by our former county administrator. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 12A?
Still moved.
Thank you, Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item 13 on our agenda is our resolutions portion. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Items A through E?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item carries. Item 14 on our agenda is the Award of Contract Change Orders and Bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the Award of Contract Change Orders and Bids, consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that adoption of said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Is there a motion to adopt Resolutions A through C?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Abstain.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item 15 on our agenda is our financial portion. We have two payments of the bills. We'll start with payment of Bills List A. Is there a motion to approve Bills List A?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Abstain.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item 15B is the payment of Bills List B. Is there a motion to approve the Bills List?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item 16 on our agenda is our personnel agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the personnel agenda?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item carries. Item 17 is our administrative report. Mr. Lovell, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do not. We have a very long particular session, so...
That we do. Thanks. County Council report, anything from you, Katie?
Not this evening.
Okay. Item 19 on our agenda is unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business this evening? Item 20 is new business. Do we have any new business this evening? Item 21 is our second public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less regarding non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. When you arrive, please state your name and municipality for the record. Is there a motion to open the floor for public comment this evening?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries, and we are now open to public comment.
Harvey Rosef, Byram Township. I'm going to submit the following for the record, and I'll read it as well, and I ask that it be placed in the minutes. Hello, Commissioners, Administrator Lovell, Counsel Steinhardt, and Records Custodian Lyons. As you may know, my Oprah lawsuit was successful against the county who withheld well-defined and controversial records regarding the solar program. However, juicy records are still being censored or withheld, and the pretension that the tax equity contract is not known to the county remains. Yet the court action has now provided all this paper that refers to the contract. As you may be aware, by alternate means, I have audio recordings and minutes of a freeholder executive session where administration and its professionals promised all kinds of things regarding this tax equity contract in order to gain freeholder approval of the contract. The public, and especially the commissioners, should want to see if those verbal promises were met. Did they walk their talk to the freeholders? Why let the administration release their promises without releasing what they actually did? I'll rephrase. Shouldn't we all see if the administration and professionals walked their talk to the freeholder board? On November 16, 2018, I came before the freeholders to present on this very matter. Counsel Kelly harassed and interjected, and we have since gone on a surreal four-year journey that is quite costly for the county. All this over a contract that was approved by past freeholders was sold to a supposedly independent solar program trustee, and that figured prominently in the solar bailout negotiations. Again, here's a thousand pages of emails confirming this. I'm here tonight to ask for the tax equity contract and the documents on the privilege log to be released uncensored for the following reasons. Freeholders approved the tax equity deal. Two, unlike other counties, Sussex administration specifically asked for and received $1 million for this paper sales transaction. The supposed, number three, the supposed independent solar program trustee is no longer independent. It bought the rights to taxpayer misery, years of taxpayer losses. Show us the contract that established this ethical conflict. The county purchased the Boxer solar investigation at a hefty cost of half a million dollars, but it appears Boxer did not receive the tax equity records, as the deal is not in his report, nor was it provided under Oprah, and its ramifications are unknown.
Time is up, Mr. Rosef. Thank you.
Okay, so I will submit this for the record. You can read the rest of my statement.
Thank you very much.
And attached to it is the privilege log that Ms. Lyons has...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments this evening? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the floor for public comment?
Still moved.
And return to regular business? Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item 22 is our reminders portion. As always, we'd like to remind you to please check the county's website, which is sussex nj.us, for meeting schedules and the latest updates from the County of Sussex. And item 23, I will call Terry up to please read the executive session item we have this
Whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated. Number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege. County Bridge Q-06 Utility Agreement, USDA Rural Business Development Grant, ARPA Projects, Part-Time County Council, PBA 138 Sheriff's Unit, Cochran House Condo Association. Item number eight, matters relating to the employment relationship, county administrator search update, and personnel. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality. And be it further resolved that upon completion of the business which the Board has entered into executive session, the Board shall...
Not.
...not reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public, and therefore, the Board will adjourn the meeting from executive session.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session this evening?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. We're adjourned from public here. Thank you very much. Please have a wonderful night.